Call the meeting for order. The Willis City Council for this June 22, 2022. We'll begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Calco?
Councilmember Strong? Gonzalez?
Gonzalez.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes, present. All right, our first order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes so that each person has an opportunity to address the council. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to address the council on a matter that's not on the agenda? I see Gary Martin. Go ahead, Gary, you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. I'm here tonight representing the WCA, the Willis Center for the Arts. I'd like to thank Jim Lance and Brian Bender and others who put together the new art policy. Well done, very well done. The Willis Center for the Arts would like to present a sculpture show in 2023 or 2024 for and with the city of Willis. The idea is to invite a dozen or so sculptors to present large exterior sculptures to attract tourists and delight citizens. We have the resources to obtain such sculptors. We'd like to see four sculptures along the bypass on private property that can be viewed from the 101, one in the city park across from the, uh, one that's, other than the city parks, and five along the south end of town. Most tourists use the south exit to get to Route 20. If we can find more locations, we'll find more sculptures. We'd like to say the show opened from Memorial Day through Labor Day. We'd like to partner with the city to make this a biannual event. This is a very ambitious project that will take cooperation between landowners, businesses, citizens, and artists. Publicity in Bay Area newspapers will be expensive, as well additional insurance if needed. I'm sorry I cannot give you more information at this time, but the commitments are not finalized whereby we cannot secure a grant for the project by September of 2023. This year, we'll have to plan for 2004. It's not too early to start planning and contacting artists for a project like this. Thank you for your time. And I think there was a minute and a half. Any questions?
No, and thank you, Gary. Because it was during public expression, the council isn't allowed to comment on it.
Right.
But we, any of us would be happy to follow up with you. And feel free to reach out to us via email or calling us. I know many of us talk to you regularly anyway.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address us on matters not on the agenda? All right. And before we go forward, just looking for the council's blessing on this. We have an agenda item, Agenda 9B, and it, um, there is a recommendation to pull Item 9B, which is the discussion and possible action adopting resolution for the Trout Unlimited project. There seems to be some public that has some questions, and we want to give them an opportunity to meet directly with Trout Unlimited and get their questions answered. I don't want to go into a full discussion just basically whether or not the council approves pulling this item. If you have any objections, I guess now would be the time. Okay. For those of you who may be here for this item, we are going to pull Item 9B and bring it back at a later date. And if you'd like to reach out to Trout Unlimited, you can contact the city offices and they can help you make that connection to answer any questions you may still have. Brian Bender, do you want to add anything, or is that sufficient?
Uh, Mayor Rodriguez, that's sufficient. We found out some details later today from Trout Unlimited, the applicants with the request. We told them we would honor their request and present that to the mayor and the council. And I think it sounds like the council is in agreement. So we'll disable this and let Trout Unlimited do their outreach with the property owners and then report back to the full council with the request item.
All right. Moving on to public matters, we have Little Lake Fire Department update presented by our fire chief, Carter.
Hi, you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I had to switch over to this phone, had some difficulties. Oh, hey, thank you for letting me on this evening for a few minutes. I don't want to take up a lot of time with that. I've got a few things I wanted to touch base on. We recently had our fundraiser for the association, and I wanted to thank the city and the public for everything they did. We had a great turnout. The mailers went good. The day of in-person participation went great. We were a little rusty, you know? We haven't had a fundraiser since the old firehouse got tore down, so this was our first chance. But it all went well, and I wanted to thank everybody that participated. We had multiple businesses that gave to us and allowed us to borrow things for the event, and everything went really, really well. Too many people to list here, but I wanted to come on and thank everybody for what they did. The firefighters, thank them, and we look forward to doing it again next year. On top of that, the new firehouse is completed. We've got final completion on the new firehouse. We have just a couple, you know, minor little things, a couple door things here and there to kind of fix up. But the new firehouse, your firehouse is complete, and we're moved in as official. Our firefighters, they've recently, I should say recently, within the last few weeks, they've completed their annual pressure training. They're gearing up and they are, you know, they're ready to, and ready to roll for our current fire season. We never know what we're going to get into, but they're ready to roll for our local emergencies and our out-of-county responses. So we're setting back and just seeing what happens. And that's kind of all I want to do, just come on and thank everybody, give a little update on the firehouse, and see if there's any questions for me.
All right. Chief Carter, we're glad you could be here today. And we'd love it if you were able to attend our meetings maybe once a month and just give us an update about what's happening, especially with fire season. Obviously, things will be heating up as we go through the summer, and we like to just kind of be abreast of what might be happening or what citizens can do to be proactive in trying to ensure all of us are safe. I have a couple of questions for you, but does anybody from the council have questions for Chief Carter? I was, okay, I was curious. I know there's a lot going on with the county and a possible sales tax initiative, and I'm just wondering if anybody has approached the Little Lake Fire Department about needs over there.
Now, when you say needs and approach, are you talking from the public or from other departments or from state or local? Because I'm fairly new on this measure. I'm looking into it currently, and at the county fire chief level, we're starting to talk about it and engage on how the funds will be allocated. And honestly, I mean, I'm off board, of course, at least for the fire side of it. I don't know a lot about the water side. I just don't know. But, you know, as you guys know, there's not a lot of avenues for us to pull funds, especially new funds. The firehouse, of course, is a new fund that you guys voted for, so we appreciate that. And it does sunset when it's finally paid off. But as far as, you know, constant revenue, things that we can count on, things that we can purchase equipment, purchase vehicles, pay employees to boost the staff, those things don't come around very often. So this tax is pretty exciting for me. It's in a sympathy. I don't know a lot about it or where it's headed or even a general idea of who's for it, who's against it. But I am actively learning, and we're very involved in it. But that's about as much as I know right now.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, I received a call earlier from Supervisor Jordy who indicated that there wasn't going to be a water component now, that it settled on just a fire component, and that they scaled back the amount so that it would, basically the same amount that she asked for. I guess it's in line with the library tax so that there wouldn't be any more. But he was kind of, I also haven't delved into it. I was actually hoping to speak to the chief and ask him. I think he may be the speaker, because it sounds like this just was hot off the buses yesterday, I guess, as he got decided.
You know, I have not, if that was for me, I'm sorry. I haven't got a lot of information about that. I did hear a rumor that there was something changing in the water side of it. And I'll be honest with you, unless I'm able to reach out or somebody reaches out to me, I probably won't get any new information until I get to the chief's meeting next month. But just like this, new information's coming in all the time. I just don't ever know, you know, what's set in stone or what's just talked about at this point.
Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, I was just wondering on that subject, has the Board of Supervisors reached out to all of the fire chiefs in any formal way about this?
They have not reached out to me directly. I did hear that our local, our president of the Minnesota County Fire Chief Association did tie in with the board. I have not got any final review of what they talked about or what was, you know, what the decisions were made there. I should find out this next month.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. For those of you who would like to see the latest update, you can watch the supervisors' meeting on YouTube that took place yesterday where they did discuss the sales tax issue. Thank you, Fire Chief Carter, for being here today.
All right, thank you, Brett.
Thank you. All right. Enactment ordinances we have numbered for us today. On the consent calendar, we have the city council minutes of June 8, and we also have a resolution ratifying and extending for an additional 30 days the virtual council committee and commission. And then, let's see. So just had a quick thought, Dolores. We have 30 days, and we don't have a meeting in July. Is it June 20th? So we're still within our 30 days? Okay. All right. Do we have a?
For the budget hearing meeting next week, we also threw on the AB 361 resolution to give us coverage to the second meeting, or the only meeting in July.
Perfect, that was a concern. Thank you. I see council member, Vice Mayor Connie has a.
Thank you. Dolores, I just wanted to make a quick correction to the minutes from the June 8 meeting. In Section 11, when I was discussing the MCOG meeting, there is a line right before it says Mayor Rodriguez, and it says CalCOG. It's actually CalCOG, like MCOG. So Cal-C-O-G.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, I also gave Dolores a correction on, I think it was Greta Connie's dissent vote regarding the improvements at the groundwater treatment. And it was just a typo, but really that's been incorporated. It was a dissent, not an assent vote, if I'm correct. And I was not, I was absent for that meeting sadly.
Correct, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Vice Mayor Larry.
What's your move?
Thank you. Strong, did you second that motion?
Well, since I wasn't there, maybe I, well, I'll second it. I read the minutes, it sounds accurate. I'll second.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to address us on this agenda item? Having heard none, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Stransky? Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. We have no monthly activity reports included, and there is no commission agency or authority business to address today. So I will move on to the city manager reports and recommendations and turn it over to city manager, Brian Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of a brief topic, and I think the agenda is going to be relatively straightforward as well. As you can see, the people who are watching us, you see a ladder behind Gaffey's shoulder there, and I'm kind of in a temporary holding pattern here. There's rather large piles of furniture behind Larry in the council chambers. We're making our final push on the city hall renovations. I wanted to announce to the public through this meeting tonight that we are going to formally close the city hall tomorrow. We are going to try to wrap up painting, moving furniture, moving furniture out of work areas. So on Friday, the new furniture can be properly set up, and we're not mixing paint with new furniture in the same space. So that's one of the concerns. If any members of the public have a concern, a water issue, a service issue, utility issue, please let us know. There will be staff within the building, and we can direct the crews where necessary to address any concerns the public may have. But we're just going to have the city hall as a building closed, but staff will still be present to respond to any inquiries or concerns that is expressed. Once again, the big push is to move things along this weekend or this, by Thursday, Friday. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to accommodate the public early next week. The window that you see created in the back behind me, that's the utility service window. We're going to try to open that up at least to accommodate billing and service inquiries. We still need to put in a temporary counter space so we can accommodate the public effectively. But once again, the public has been very accommodating in our renovations. They've been understanding. It will be interesting as we go through the billing cycle next week and then respond to those billing inquiries and whatnot. But once again, just please be patient with us. We're working through this. We're going to be in the final pros. The contractors are, we're going to have a contract extension on this, the scheduling. Right now, we're, they only have a few hours worth of work, but we're waiting for items that were spec, and they have several lead-in times. So most of the work's going to be done, but we're not going to be finalized. But it's going to give us opportunity to refine our work areas. We want to work with the museum and put some new artwork into the city hall. And they just kind of put a new, fresh face on the building. Also, I just want to recognize one of our rather valuable employees who will be leaving us at the end of the month. Mercy here at the utility billing counter is leaving us. She's home to new pastors, new opportunities, new challenges in her life, and we're going to be working around that limitation. We have a good replacement right now. So I just want to recognize that. And if anyone who knows Mercy in the public, congratulate her on the fine service she has provided this community and wish her well in our new endeavors. So that's what I have. Any questions, and we'll go from there.
All right, I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other topics outside of renovations, Brian, or was that it?
Uh, no, no, Madam Mayor, I don't. It really, with the last couple of weeks here, we've been focusing on renovations, IT transfers. I don't want to go into details about IT. That could consume several hours of our time. But we are transitioning from the county's IT. They've been very gracious in their transfer and handover of the IT network to our new consultants, which the council selected Apex. We are looking at some upgrades, especially with internet access to the city hall. And we're also working with the police department on ensuring they have the security and the bandwidth for internet access that they need for their services. So everything is going well. Like I said, it's just been renovations. We've all been working in temporary work areas, doing IT, and working on budgets. So once again, the final budget has a document with supporting documents, supporting documents in the memo. The resolutions went out to the council this afternoon. We have the budget hearing scheduled for Monday at 9:30 virtually. The document does incorporate the comments we received both at the budget workshop and in subsequent comments that council members put forward. There were some changes that were made with guidance from department heads to recline it. But the budget is solid. There is a surplus. We took the council's concerns about the allocation of Measure K through a two-year, biannual budget prep. And so hopefully, the workshop, or excuse me, the budget hearing on Monday is straightforward. And if you have any questions leading up to that event, just let Manny and myself know. They will address those concerns and questions that the council may have. So everyone can be on the same page for Monday at 9:30.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Will that be a virtual meeting or an in-person?
Correct, it will be virtual. So basically, Manny's got a PowerPoint, once again, to address some of the concerns that were raised during the workshop. We're going to go through it. We have the opportunity to go by page by page. We can look at departments. We can look at expenditures over revenue due. We can break down Measure K, how that has been injected into the budget. Right now, it's basically an open topic. Wherever the council wants to go, whatever questions you need addressed or answered, we can accommodate you.
Okay. And for those of us that can attend, we've got that 9:00 AM to air again for John Gale. All right.
Correct, that's our officer that's coming on to the police department. That will take place at 9:00, and then we'll transition to the virtual budget hearing at 9:30.
Thank you. All right. Our next order of business is Item 9A, the discussion and possible action approving a resolution to adopt the local road safety plan for the city of Willis and authorizing the submission of two project applications. And our presenting staff member is project manager Jeremy Ronco.
Um, hi, yeah. So this is, this is the local road safety plan. It was presented at the previous council meeting. You know, we talked about previously, it's required for each city in order to receive the Highway Safety Improvement Plan funds. So H6 funds is a requirement. Really, this is just a request to formally adopt the LRSP that was presented previously. We were here to answer any questions council might have. We also have Ruta Jariwala of TK, or TJKM, who prepared the document for the city online, if you have any, like, specific questions. But really, just asking for formal adoption of what was previously presented.
Vice Mayor Connie?
Um, hi, Jeremy, thank you. I'm just wondering if there will be future projects identified and grant money sought to fund any future projects beyond these two?
Yeah, I mean, potentially, it depends on what round. But we're not locked into anything yet. These applications aren't due until September. So, you know, I didn't think we were asking for authorization to submit the two applications quite yet. We might want to add additional or subtract or, you know. We don't have to decide that right now. But there's potential to do more, and I think there's going to be other rounds of this funding too. I mean, this just sets us up to receive this funding in the future.
Excellent. Thank you, excellent.
All right. Any further questions from council? Anybody from the, potentially? I'll entertain a motion first. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I certainly.
Thank you.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public who want to address us on this matter? All right. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Strong? Renewed it?
Sorry. Yeah, to clarify that motion, the staff recommendation language does include approving two applications for actual projects. Should we only be approving the planning document and not those two applications at this point? To give you some leeway between now and September? Would sound like verbally that's what you were saying the recommendation was, but the written recommendation includes those.
Hey, Jeremy, can I, I'm not sure whether I can give my two cents on that.
Sure, please do.
Yeah, I think we should go and ask for permission to get the two projects also approved because, you know, at this point, we as TJKM, and you getting contracted through MCOG, our contract does end on June 30, and we have completed those two applications to a point where it's 95% complete, and you just have to submit for those two projects. So I think keeping that item open for those two projects, it probably is not going to help, right? Because those two applications are pretty ready, pretty much ready to be submitted to Caltrans. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, it probably doesn't hurt either way. I mean, if we want to add a project, we can, we can do that later, even if we do, you know, get authorization for these two, so.
Right. You can add a third one, or, you know, we can help you out with that. But for these two, I was just thinking that it would be the best thing to do, yeah.
So the motion, the motion and second includes those? Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to add just some clarifying language, maybe that would help too. Could you go over to the packet itself and look at the resolution and last paragraph? The city council approves and adopts the local road safety plan and authorizes staff to make applications for funding under the Safety Improvement Program to complete road safety improvement projects for the benefit of all. So I don't see in here where it ties us to a specific application, rather, adopt the safety plan and authorize us to make applications. Does that, does that help, Mash?
Yeah, I was looking just at the staff report recommendation, and I believe it was a little more specific. But I also am hearing from Ruta and Jeremy both that it won't hurt, and in fact, it might help to go ahead and have this motion include approving, going ahead with those two applications specifically. If that's correct, I have no problem with it.
So yes, Member Strong, that was the intent for staff, was to essentially have two items for your attention and formal action. One is the adoption of the plan, which you received a presentation a month and a half ago. And then it's part of that subsequent action tonight is moving forward, which these two define projects that is a, basically one of the recommendations in that plan for the city of Willis. Like was noted, there's a pretty quick turnaround time here with the consultant's contract that is going to be terminated or is going to end at the end of the month with MCOG. But we have the plan now. So from the plan, we can identify subsequent future projects for consideration.
Thank you.
So councilmember Gonzalez, is your recommendation that of the two? So, Councilmember Gonzalez, is your recommendation that of the two projects that are listed in the agenda summary report? It was as written, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I think you further clarified based on the resolution we're passing that gives them that language.
All right. Any other comments from council or clarifying questions? Okay. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Skansky?
Yes.
Connie?
Connie.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. All right. Moving on to our Department Monthly Reports. Look here first from the airport.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, City Council. Yes, I'd like to report out, they've been quite busy up at the airport. We have had the Public Works crew up there doing re-debatement, which of course is a big deal at this time of the year. We want to make sure that we keep all the people down, all the garbage, things like that, so we don't have any accidents up there. We also have Caltrans DOT here to do an inspection. We did get a letter from them back. They'd like us to top a few trees, but that's looking really good as far as our report back from them. We did this a couple of years ago and we've just tried to stay on top of it, so that came back very favorable for the city. We've also had a decline in fuel from our airplane customers, I guess you could say, along with a few others that go up there and get fuel because we are at a higher price right now. Actually, everybody is, but ours is quite high because unfortunately, we had to get it at the peak of the season or at the peak of the price. So, we're working on that. We're also continuing to work on the new hangar leases with City Attorney Lance and we took some more steps with that at this week's meeting of how we need to move forward with that. Continuing to work on those projects and finish up our hangar inspections. We only have a few left to do and we will have that completed for the first time in several years, so that's, we're feeling really good about getting that done. That's about all I have this evening, if anybody has any questions.
Are there any special events coming up this summer at the airport, Kathy? Are there any special events coming up this summer at the airport?
I'm sorry. Could you say that again, Mayor?
Are there any special events that you should be aware of that are coming up at the airport?
Not at this time. We did have the EAA do a special event last weekend. They had a really good turnout. There were lots of planes up there, so that was really nice for them. But we have nothing scheduled that I am aware of anyway at this point for the remainder of the summer. We will get back on track next year with Airport Day.
All right. Thank you. All right. Community Development?
Madam Mayor, I do know that Dusty needed to step out of the office this afternoon. There was a slight chance he wouldn't be available. I don't think he's on the line. He had a family commitment and he goes to one of his daughters' birthday, so we're kind enough to give him the day off this afternoon to celebrate with the family. If you have any questions, I can respond to the written report, but basically, Community Development has been active on permits. We've been working with the new city planner, Taylor Perry, on getting her on board, getting her exposed to all the projects and she's already diving in on assignments and working on applications. So, we have that. Basically, we have released the RFP for the General Plan Amendment, so that is out there and that is in the works. And one of the things I mentioned earlier about the pending budget hearings, we modified the budget under Community Development to apply additional funds for some of the planning work that needs to be done in the next few years and that will support the General Plan Amendment and... What? And then sphere of influence and annexation plans. These are all items quite simple.
We lost you. We lost the audio.
Other than that, I think... We lost the audio? Okay. I was lost to.
We heard most of it.
So, basically, like I said, we got the most of it. So, Community Development's been following ahead. They've been working on a lot of projects, been meeting with property owners and developers and trying to get projects identified for long-term commitments.
The part that we lost was after you said that to include in the budget about the general plan, but also I think the zoning and...
Zoning ordinance also needs to support the plan and recommendations, sphere of influence to fast or identify the opportunities for annexation, external growth.
Thanks, Mayor Connie.
Thank you. I see that Taylor is on the line here and so I'm hoping that she hears this. I just wanted to say thank you for the newly improved Community Development Facebook page. It's active and interesting and I appreciate it and I'm sure members of the community do also.
Yes, we're updating Facebook pages.
I just have one thing I wanted to mention. I told the public I would. They're looking for an update on the vacancy, building vacancy organs, so maybe at the next meeting, Dusty can bring us an update on where we might be on that. We have a drilling number.
I will make certain that happens, but in a quick overview, basically, code enforcement, building officials, Davy Bowles and Dusty met. They arranged a meeting, sent letters out to schedule a meeting with impacted property owners. It was a low attendance. That was kind of the first step in that ordinance, but we do need to continue on that track to communicate to the property owners the importance of the responsibility of maintaining that building to a satisfactory outcome.
All right. I'm sure we'll hear more later. Thank you, City Manager. A pleasure. We'll move on to engineering.
Well, I've just been sort of completely absorbed with Blosser for the last couple of weeks. It's going well so far, but it's been quite a bit of work and quite a bit of staking. I know one thing I did want to bring up is that the PG&E project on East Hill Road is scheduled to start back up with traffic control and some extended hours next week and maybe the week after. Hopefully, they're nearing completion, at least of the underground portion, and we'll be able to get the plates out of the road. I talked to them about that today. But before restoration's totally done on that, it is going to be a few weeks, but the next couple of weeks, you'll see the single lane traffic control. They've been good about keeping it from backing up on the Bechtel and, you know, maintaining access to the hospital and I told them obviously, you know, maintain access to the hospital 100%. They're very aware of that. Andrea, do you have anything to add?
I don't really have anything to add to the report at this time.
Those are the two big ones. The curb and gutter started to be installed on Blosser and it looks good and we're happy so far.
Thank you. Moving on to the police department.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Don't really have a whole lot to add. I want to thank the mayor for mentioning that we will be swearing in a new officer on Monday. John Gale will be sworn in for us and he'll start his field training officer program next week and we are excited to have him and add him to the team. You see the staff report in the monthly report, nothing really to change from there. I do want to mention, I omitted to put in, we're in June now. We started repo reporting, the Racial Identity Profiling Act reporting in January and as of June 12, we've made 1,019, what they're called repo reports or entries into the system. And those are all encompassing all the stops that our officers make, whether they give a traffic ticket or not, whether there's an investigatory stop, you know, or off of a radio call. So, we'll keep monitoring that. At some point, we can generate some reports as well to show, you know, what the breakdowns are and stuff, so we'll provide those to the council when we can extract those and get them to you. We're kicked off Frontier Days celebrations with the hometown celebration last weekend. Everything went well. Just next weekend and the one after, we'll also have some fairly big events that we're deploying for. We've got our partners in the Sheriff's parole and fishing game that are going to be helping us as far as lending us some additional bodies. And we anticipate that everybody will have fun attending attendance and we'll try to make it off, go off without a hitch, so everybody enjoys themselves and has a good time. That's pretty much it. Everything else is pretty standard on the reports. On Monday, we'll also be interviewing for a vacant sergeant position. We have a candidate that's got seven and a half, eight years' experience. He will be a lateral if he does well in the interviews and then, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to grow our team even more. The staffing has obviously been a priority for us to kind of help out our officers here so that they're not working as long and as hard, but we also are taking a measured approach to make sure that the people that we bring in are of the philosophy that we have going forward and, you know, that they are enriched with the community policing philosophy, the partnership with the community and are in tune with treating everybody with dignity and respect. So, it's a tedious process and, you know, as well as we're also competing with a lot of other agencies in our region and throughout the state, but we feel we're getting some good quality people in and the quicker we can get them in without sacrificing any training or anything, the sooner it's going to help us, help our people and ultimately help the community. So, with that, if anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Mayor Connie.
Good evening, Chief. Thank you as always for these updates. I really appreciate them. I was curious to see that the calls for service, this May had dropped so significantly from May of 2021. Do you have any comments on, is that good news for our community? What does that mean?
I think it is good news for our community in that not that many people find themselves in need of having to call us to resolve some issue or address some issue. You know, having said that, I don't want to dissuade anybody from, you know, if they feel they need our response to give us a call, but it is indicative that we're not getting as many calls. It is quite a drop, which is significant, but as you can see, the other categories that kind of stay, they're pretty much the same. So, our officers are out there working and try to be productive and so not having calls for service just means there's not that many reports being generated and allows more time for traffic enforcement, community outreach, those types of things.
Thank you.
I certainly hope that means less crime. We'd all love that.
Let's hope so.
Thank you to you and your team for doing such a great job over at the police department. I can definitely see a cultural change over there and much appreciated. All right. Moving on to public work.
Yeah. This is Scott Herman, Public Works Director. Kenan is out on vacation. He didn't have any updates to this report, but I did want to add one in regards to the mowing in town. We should be getting our mower repaired and back early next week, so we will be hitting it pretty hard. Just ask the community to watch out for tractor mowing on the side of the road, be vigilant. And the first goal is to hit Clearwood Road, which is going to take some, obviously some traffic control to meander through there, so. That's all I have for the public works.
Thanks, Mayor Connie. I feel like I'm chatty Cathy tonight. I just wanted to say, Scott, if you could pass on comments to Kenan when he returns. I've heard several comments from members of the public recently, how much they appreciate seeing the street sweeper out regularly. They really like that, so thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
From you, Trinity?
Not much to update there. Just grateful that we are still at 100% capacity in our reservoirs. That's really the bonus there. That's really all I have to add on that. If you guys have any questions on any of this, I can, I'm sure, I can truly answer them.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes. Scott, I know you reported, and now I'm like, never mind, but you reported somewhere else that we had used 6.3 million gallons of the groundwater from a groundwater treatment plant, I believe in May. And I got an email that explained your, why you did that, but I didn't really understand the explanation very well. It seems to me, A, that that should be in those reports to, you know, as part of the monthly reports, but also that maybe the whole council would like to understand what triggers using that kind of gallonage from the groundwater plant. You know, was it one of the circumstances that we approved or was it somewhere in between?
Yeah. We're allowed to use an average of 8 million gallons a month on that, so what we have been doing is a supplemental supply to our reservoirs, which allows the reservoirs to stay more full, the water colder, better water quality, and it also allows our surface water treatment plant to lower the flows to get better treatment through our filters.
Okay. Well, just so the whole council and the public knows, I have been talking to Brian and I guess he is planning to bring this up to the Water Committee, that I think the interpretation that you're allowed to use eight or maybe it's nine million gallons average monthly through the whole year is not what I thought we were approving back in April and I want to have that clarified to see if that's indeed the direction the council gave and what the constraints are on the why we use the water when we do, so that, so that it isn't just every single month you could use that much and not have to explain that there was an emergency or a maintenance issue or flushing the system, the ones that we specifically identify. So, I want that clarified before we go too much farther. Not this meeting, but in the future.
Okay. Understood.
I believe that City Manager Bender received your request and the Water and Wastewater Committee is going to take up your request and report back to the council.
That is correct, Madam Mayor. I did speak to Members Stransky just before this meeting, advising them that we're...
I did speak to Members Stransky just before this meeting, advising them that we'd try to do this in the first two weeks of July. City Engineer has been out under the weather, so we're just trying to get everyone back on the same page, but we're going to do it sometime by the middle of July, we'll have that meeting, and the intent is, there'd be nice scheduling that the committee can report back, and the whole council, so that's the July 27 meeting.
Thank you. That's fine.
Okay. That concludes our department report. Thank you all for the information. And then we'll move on to our City Council announcements, communications, and reports, and I'll begin with our Vice Mayor, Greta Connie.
Thank you. I haven't had any meetings since last council meeting, so I have no reports for you all this evening.
All right. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I'm in the same boat. I have another LACO meeting till July, and the next city's meeting, it's supposed to be in Point Arena, won't be till August. I have everything now.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Yes, so first, I did miss the EDFC meeting this, this, earlier this month, so I haven't got that report. However, on the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority, we've had two meetings in the last seven days. The first one was regularly scheduled, and we had a special meeting this morning because we're facing the difficulty of having not found a replacement for our general manager, and we're having to really look at what our options are and make sure that we somehow continue to be able to provide the services, but we're, we're looking at our options, and I'm sure this is going to come back to the council, you know, in the near future, because our choices are somewhat constrained. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Stransky.
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. And I serve on Mendocino Transit Authority Board. We met on Monday. Lots of discussion about our budget, but relevant to the city of Willis, there was a request for a bus stop at the Golden Rule, and I just want constituents to know that I did bring it up. A southbound bus stop is not a major issue, but unfortunately, you can't pick up passengers if you can't drop passengers back off in the vicinity, and there's no way to drop passengers off at the Golden Rule area heading northbound, and so I'm going to reach out to the Willis Senior Center and find out what the, since most of those residents that live in there are senior citizens, see if they're providing services there, and if not, how we can get that going. So just an update there. And then Loretta from MCAG also informed the MTA Board that the study was approved for a needs assessment, which impacts us because it would potentially provide for services in Brook Trails. So Brook Trails, Lightville, Cobalow, Potter Valley, and I believe Redwood Valley is in the needs assessment to see what public transit could support there before we come up with a plan. It'll take about a year for them to do that needs assessment. So just letting you all know about that. And then we also are on the special events calendar, and the MTA will have the trolley there to transport people. You're welcome to hop aboard the MTA at the, towards the end of the parade and get a ride to the park. We'll be there to pick up passengers towards the end of the route and give them that last seven block ride to the picnic if you so choose. And I think that's all I have to report in the way of committees. Do we have any good and welfare? No good and welfare? What about the fact that we're all going to be out celebrating the Fourth of July, and we all want to stay COVID safe, and just looking forward to seeing some of your faces, hope that this year on the floss, it'll be more than Jerry and I, I hope. And bring your decorations, because we don't want to be driving around in a plain white vehicle. So bring a few holiday decorations for the Fourth of July. All right. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:26 PM, and I'll see you all at the next one, or Monday, a budget. Thank you.